We have more than a forum, six of us. So let's begin the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting of December 2nd. Let's go over the minutes, last meeting of November 4th. Is there a motion to approve them?
This is Lindsay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks Lindsay. I'll second that. Any comments, questions, concerns, edits, minutes? Anything I didn't list in those four options? No? Okay. All those, well you guys don't have your cameras on, so... I'm gonna do roll call. All those in favor? John?
Yes.
Yes. Sarah's in favor, hand up.
Yes.
Yeah, and I heard Bonnie and Dan and myself as well. Alright, that's all in favor for the minutes. Now onto the announcements. Anything? Anyone?
Yeah, I've got...
Sue?
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Tom's audio is kind of cutting in and out.
Who's audio?
At least it is for me.
My audio?
Mine too, it's pretty bad.
Um, it's possible because we have the blowers on for some meat in this room. Oh, okay. Let's see...
Is Sue's audio going in and out, or is she fine?
Well, right now, she's fine.
And am I still having the audio issue?
You're okay right now.
Just a minute ago, it sounded like you could hear someone typing. So I don't know if it's on your end.
Okay. It was typing, so...
Alright, well, please let us know if that happens again. We'll try to sloop it down. Sue, you're the announcer, you have it?
Yeah, I wanted to let you know that the new bridge to Hinsdale, there's gonna be a ribbon cutting tomorrow at 12:30. The public is invited. It's going to be on the New Hampshire side. If you want to attend, there's gonna be several speakers. You know, elective representatives, the governor from New Hampshire. You can park at Ruddings and make your way down to the kind of a bucket on the New Hampshire side.
You walk from the Vermont side?
You cannot walk over there, but after the ribbon is cut, the public is allowed to walk on the bridge. So, yeah, so if you wanna come out, it starts at 12:30.
Sue, I remember a few years ago, since you were or still are on the existing Bridges and New Bridge Interstate Subcommittee for this project, you asked the planning commission if we had input. There was nothing binding, but if we had input on what the signs might be that they put up on those bump outs on the sidewalks, did anything? And then we gave some suggestions, I don't know what they were, but...
Yeah, so there, I don't know if the signs are up. I know that they'll be completing, kind of finishing work, I think, into the spring. But there were two interpretive sign panels that were designed. The one that we did from Brattleboro had to do with the river and kind of fish species. And the one that was done by Hinsdale had to do with the island and kind of the history of the area. We had lots of ideas from Brattleboro, but using National Park Service guidelines, really had to narrow it down so that it wasn't too worrying or anyplace. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing those. I just don't know if they'll be ready.
Any other announcements? I'll just say I'm still making progress on the downtown bike parking. Some progress has been made and probably have it on next meeting's agenda for our next meeting for y'all to review and give some feedback on. Okay, let's move on to our monthly Town Plan 2026 item. We're gonna be talking about a potential timeline plan. John or Sue?
Yeah, you're gonna put it up there?
Yes.
You do the rules first?
Yeah.
So, what we did was we created the first revision of the Town Plan activities for '25 and '26. And the reason we're putting this up is because we started by creating a set of rules for how we would handle the different chapters. Time arrow, but also overall, how we would handle developing the Town Plan guidelines, if you will, for how we would separate these. And it might make a little bit more sense as I actually walk through some of these and then show you in context how the schedule worked out. So that's why I'm gonna go over the rules first. So, the first thing is, is that there's some public hearings that are required, right? There's a planning commission public hearing required, and there are two select board public hearings that are required during the adoption process. Now, remember, May of '26 is when the plan has to be approved by. So we scheduled the select board public hearings for April of '26, and we scheduled the planning commission public hearing in February of '26. And again, you'll see all this on the schedule that I showed, but it'll also drive the rest of the rules to the top.
You say May deadline for approvals, that approval by the state or approval by the select board?
Approval by select board representative committee.
Right, and then however long it takes, so that, and then, so that May is them submitting it to the higher ups?
Yeah, I'll put all, Sue, I'm sure knows, honestly, I don't know what happens after that.
We need a, the Town of Brattleboro is to wrap up its work, I think.
So then, there's some public hearings that will also be done, and those will be in January '26. And those meetings, what we'll do is we'll have a town plan that we'll call a draft town plan, and then we'll present it somehow to a gathering of the public. Now, this is not the only time, obviously, that the chapters will be talked with to the public, but this will be a chance for the public to see feedback and present, present feedback on the entire town plan as a whole.
Little minutia thing, you're calling those public hearings, but they're not actually the legally required, you know, public hearings of the topic?
You know, Sue, I wanted to check that. I thought that the, I actually thought the Town Plan documentation for the state said that we were required to have a public hearing. Maybe you thought, well, you say it's about the planning commission public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're right. I should change the words, is what you're saying?
I mean, there is, for any land use reg or town plan adoption, right? It's one, planning commission public hearing, two, select board public hearings. And before all of that, we are required to do some community input.
Would it make more sense, for example, to you if I said public presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Community, webinar, workshop, whatever.
Sure. Okay, so everybody, I apologize, I'm just making some notes here, so you're gonna hear some clack and clack, perhaps. Presentation. Okay. So then, now, January is kind of, and we're working backwards, right? Which is the way a lot of times we schedule. So we're working back, and now we need to have a public presentation of the town plan by January, in January of '26. So now we have to set the chapters down. And we're gonna do the chapters in some different ways, depending on the material that we already have and the public review of what would be planning material that's already been done. I'm gonna give you some specifics. So, some chapters have had a fair amount of material that has already been aggregated and reviewed by the public, and we don't feel the need to go back and start from the beginning to do it, right? And a great occasion point would be the housing action plan. That's gonna fundamentally become part of the chapter on housing in the town. It's fairly recent, it's the same sort of stuff, all that kind of stuff. Also, transportation with the walk-bike action plan. The agricultural strategic plan, which is called the food farm report. And then arts and culture, there is an effort ongoing now called the Wyndham Region Cultural Plan. It's due in May of '25. They'll be working with the public, they'll be working with Sue. Who else have been working with Sue?
Well, they've been doing a lot of interviews with arts organizations in Brattleboro, but it also includes some other towns, so...
And I'm sure they're good at the arts condition.
Yeah.
Involved from Brattleboro as well. So that will become fundamentally then the core content for... Now, those particular chapters, we don't really feel like we need to do a lot of additional public work on those. So that's a group, right, that we handled in a certain... There's another group that is gonna be handled in a little bit different way. You wanna think of the other end of the spectrum. And those are where we feel like we need a lot more public input to draft the relevant chapters. When we're gathering that information, we're probably gonna do more focused, smaller public presentations, rather than invite, you know, a large group together, as will be happening in January. We'll be inviting smaller groups, more targeted to gathering their input. And those areas are energy, land use, and economic development. So those are three areas that we probably need to gather more information. We're probably gonna focus our efforts a little bit more, so, you know, obviously, economic development might include another conversation we need to see. Land use, obviously, is going to include heavy input from the planning commission. Energy, obviously. I'm going to the energy committee this December, next week, I think it is. And they're working right now on putting, you know, their content of planning. So again, that's group two, in terms of how they're meeting. Then the third group is where the data mostly exists. We can put the chapters together, and then we can get that feedback when we have that public hearing in January of '26. Right? So we expect to get more input. We may go out, you know, we may go out to some specific cases and get that input, and it doesn't have the same urgent requirement with energy, land use, and economic development, where we know we need more information. Okay, so it may even be more targeted, it may be even more specific. Those are natural resources. Obviously, we'll involve the conservation committee on that. Historic, utilities and facilities, and that. We also thought it was really important to mention that we'll also include education. But education is a huge morass, if you will. Not necessarily make a negative picture, but it's a large area that, you know, can engender a lot of conversation. This is gonna be education, just as it relates to the facilities. Not education, you know, what are our values in terms of what we're teaching and all that kind of stuff, which is education as it relates to the facilities that we develop. And that's why we feel it ties in, obviously, with utilities and facilities. So, we have three groups, we're gonna handle them a little bit differently. You'll see that, you'll keep that in mind, obviously, as we go to the schedule, but we wanted to make that clear, that it's not one size fits all in terms of how we develop the content of the chapter. It kind of depends on what material we have and how we feel. How much information we feel that we need to gather clearly. I wouldn't say clearly, but my opinion is, the three that we have to go out and gather more information on, we really have to do a little bit more work with, right? Because those areas are still less described, less structured, up in the air more. Whatever terms you know of used or...
Questions?
Yeah.
Want to launch this question?
Yeah, we can't see any of the commissioners zooming in, so I see one hand up. Yeah, Dan, why don't you go first?
Did you, did the commissioners at home see any of that, actually?
Oh. Did you all hear Sue's question?
No, and I think that a good example of the sound being terrible.
Oh, no.
The sound is terrible.
We could hear, we could, I mean, it's, you could really strained to hear, but there's a garbled, echoey, something going on.
Is there a mic I could stand by to give it a, to provide it clear?
That's the mic. I wonder if we try to put the heat off for a little bit and see if that improves it?
Yeah, let's do it.
And I'm really sorry that I had the presentation and didn't see your hand up. So feel free to just blurt out if you're not being recognized.
Do you just have to go off shoot?
Because we have one laptop, and so it's hard.
I think so.
Yeah, the sound has been so bad that I'm putting my head next to the mic and I still don't understand.
How do you turn it off?
It's very bad.
Well, we're just trying to turn off one of the other blowers.
Okay, let's try it again, and I'm gonna go really slowly this time, and tell me if you can hear it any clearly. So, the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna discuss quickly, we're gonna discuss quickly the rules we use to develop this schedule. Now, can you hear that okay?
Dan, Bonnie, Sarah, Lindsay?
It's a little better, yep.
Better.
Let me put my face right in the mic. Is that any better?
That's not the mic, John. It's that round desk, so maybe if you move closer to it.
I'll move closer to it.
I wouldn't go touching those.
Okay.
Nope. Tom, don't touch those. That's on PC TV.
Okay, how about now? Even better, hopefully?
Sorry.
Okay.
Dan says yes.
Okay.
You're fine.
So let's, let's just real quickly go over some of the really important guidelines and rules we used for developing the schedule. The first is, we have to have an approved town plan by May of '26. There's a requirement that the select board has two public hearings. Those are gonna be during May. There is, the planning commission needs to have a public hearing. That's gonna be during... Sorry. Select board public hearings are gonna be during April. Planning commission meeting, public hearing is gonna be during the 26th. There's going to be, prior to the planning commission public hearing, we will do a public presentation of the draft town plan to a large group. Anyone who wants to comes, a public group, a public meeting. That will be in January, okay? Our goal is to get all of the chapter content that makes up the town plan done by November of '25. And we have, when we looked at all those chapters we had to do... Everybody can hear me still okay? Okay. So when we, when we looked at all the chapters we had to do, there's some chat stuff coming through, which I can't hear.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. We realized that there was really kind of three types of materials for building the chapters. We have to address the chapters in three different ways. The first is things like where we have the housing plan, the walk-bike plan. These are plans that will probably become the core material for the town plan chapter. They've been publicly reviewed, we've done a lot of work on them. We really don't feel like there's a much additional work that needs to be done before they're, you know, edited perhaps and tailored for the town plan, and then presented to the public. I mean, you could see the other ones that are the case. Now, there's another set, and I'm gonna jump to the third category, so I'm gonna skip over the one in the middle. But this is where the data mostly exists. This is gonna be a group of chapters that maybe is gonna require some additional work before we present the public hearing, but it's gonna be a lighter amount of work, right? Natural resources, the conservation committee is driving a lot of that. Historic, there's been a lot of discussion. Utilities and facilities, including education space as a facility, not anything else beyond that. We're gonna probably have to do some more work before we put those chapters together, but it will be a smaller amount of work than the last category, which we feel much more uncertain about, much more uncertain as to that there is a consensus and a publicly discussed strategy. And those are kind of the big three, if you will, which are energy, land use, and economic development. And, you know, obviously, if you have some feedback on that, you know, maybe we missed one, one needs to be juggled, and maybe one needs more work than we think it needed. That, this is the time to tell us that. But energy, land use, and economic development, we're gonna have to go out and probably have some more smaller, more focused meeting with key stakeholders in the areas that will then lead to developing content that we would then present in November 25, in November of '25, to the public. In a, in the public presentation. And that was essentially this slide. Any questions or comments?
Commissioners? Any comments on this?
I don't have any comments.
Nope, I'm all set.
No, sounds good. I've read it already.
So between the public planning commission's public hearing and the select board's in April, there's, unless we schedule more meetings, we just have our one March meeting in between, and that could eventually be a time to need to make any adjustments based off the public hearing? Is that the thinking there?
The, no, the thinking is, the select board needs 30 days between when they warn it and when they hold their hearing. So the idea would be to finish it up in February. If we need to make some changes, that's fine, pass it along to the select board. They'll have their 30 days, which to warn it for April.
So during the planning commission public hearing, I'm forgetting now, but would we make the edits then and there at the end?
Yeah.
After the public hearing closes, but during the meeting still? Okay, and then we task staff?
Yeah, or we could have a second meeting.
Or give a second meeting, if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay. But then similarly, after the public presentation in January? What if the public brings up some great points that, and we wanna make edits?
Because I would think we work in between, right? Do we need a 30-day warn on the planning commission?
We do need a 30-day warn on the planning commission, so we could do it in early January, make some changes. I mean, you know, there's a little flexibility, that's again.
Okay.
Okay, so let's make, we'll make a note that says we should probably hold the presentation in early January, so we make some quick changes, and you have, need the 30-day warn.
And the education chapter still, this is a question, is still very much relevant, even though...
It's a required element, and so, yes. The way we've always handled it is, we look at enrollment, we look at projections, we talk to the school district, or supervisor, and figure out what the needs are, how to document those.
Can you see much of a difference with the format and type of content in the education chapter, or just we're updating them on the reason?
Yeah.
And in case any commissioners don't know, that's because probably since this, the current town plan was created, a lot of schools, or all the schools in town were under the control of the Town of Brattleboro, right? Or a separate, you know, municipality, but it wasn't like a regional school system, which...
Right, I mean, it's also one of those funny things where it's a whole different board that controls, that's in charge. And so, we don't, as a town, wanna be sitting here saying, you know, assigning all this stuff to the school district. So we go with just strictly with land use planning, which is enrollments. Are there any major facility upgrades? Are there any additions that are needed? It's a common chapter throughout the country, but we're not a growing area, so it's a little...
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
The next slide is the schedule itself, you know, take a look at it. I think anybody that's ever seen an Excel spreadsheet with schedule before, you know, can recognize how we did it. I think the only point I really wanted to make was, we have some flexibility within that period of creating the chapter content. I mean, we don't technically need to have, for example, housing done by, I think that's the old slides. I don't see any marks on housing.
Oh, no.
We'll get to the current slide. So, we have right now, for example, we have January, February, March scheduled for doing the chapter on housing. We did that because housing, the housing content fundamentally exists, we believe. The reality is, though, as long as we have it ready for, as long as we have it ready by November, we're good, right? So you may see some shifting going on as we need different timings and resources, and meetings get delayed, or, you know, the usual stuff that happens. And I just want people to be clear that if it says January, February, March, we don't necessarily ring alarm bells because we're not done by March. We may have shifted it around. We really need to have everything. We'd like to have everything done by November, and we really need to have everything done by January to make the public presentation, because then we start to get into required, required stuff. There we go. So, again, if you have any feedback, anything like that, please let me know. Or Sue know, obviously, and we'll make the updates. Hopefully, it's pretty straightforward. I think the biggest, from my perspective, the biggest item is, you know, if you have a sense that we're sort of missing something, or we've forgotten something, you know, please bring it up and let us know. There may be some additional items. We had a casual conversation, I'll put it that way, today. And we talked about, you know, maybe going out and presenting to some groups. Steve had a great idea about talking to a youth group. These are not technically required, obviously, to create the town plan, but it might be a great idea if we have the time and capacity to do that and, you know, build some investment in the process. So, we'll see. Obviously, the select board, the planning commission, will be kept up to date on this. We probably should continue the updates, you know, they can be briefer now, right? Except for the situation where the planning commission is actually gonna help develop the content with land use.
And I would expect that the planning commission review these chapters as we go along.
Yeah, I do too. I agree. It may not be in a meeting, I, who knows? I'm not gonna say. Maybe it is, maybe it was a good idea. It's probably premature to say one year. Any questions?
Well, sometimes we can do things like, you know, have homework, where you share the draft, or the ideas, or hey, what are some questions or prompts that you guys might have ideas for to ask these different groups? To solicit their feedback, and then we can just, on our own free time, send it, and then at the meeting, just kind of summarize what happened.
No, it's a great idea.
As long as there is any discussion of more than four people.
We literally made it pretty interactive, but you're right, probably more appropriate to sort of do a homework and then bring in the specific.
Okay, commissioners? Oh, Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple things. First off, this document that you're sharing, Sue, in our packet, it was, this is a logistical, technical thing, but is it possible this could be printed or made into a document that is landscape rather than portrait vertical?
Yes, I will send this out. This is landscape that you're looking at now, so... I realized that after I merged, after I did something, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to...
I'll send it out.
Yeah, okay. And then, just to, just on the comments in the sections where, I'm not sure if you mentioned this, John, I apologize if I didn't hear you, but it says in a couple of them at the top, no pre-review is required for housing and transportation, and maybe for agriculture, I think?
Yeah, so that wording might be, it might, we might have better wording than that. What I really meant to say was that we feel pretty good about the work that's been done already in those areas. So with the housing plan, for example, with the bike-walk action plan, you know, with the food farm strategy, or whatever it's called. It's not so much that no pre-review is required. You're good to point out that that's probably excessive. We probably still obviously need to do work with it, but it's a mic, it's a smaller amount of work. Does that answer your question?
Well, yes, so basically, we're not gonna be just copying and pasting documents that are already existing. We're gonna actually review those as far as making them part of the town plan. Is that what you're saying? We are gonna review them, or we're not, or we're kinda, are we gonna have a...
I'm interested in Sue's comment, actually.
Yeah, I mean, I think stylistically, we're not cutting and pasting, certainly because we didn't write those. We might refer to them, and we might kind of summarize some of the key findings, but... I think the point is that there was a lot of outreach done for these plans, and they've been accepted by the select board, and we're still working on them. So they provide a lot of good information that we can still work with. Does that answer your question, Dan?
Sure, yeah, I see what you mean. So the, so the review is going to entail pulling out the findings or pulling out some of the key aspects of those reports and putting them in the town plan?
Yeah. But, you know, I think that that could be a good homework assignment, is understanding from the planning commission, what do you think are the key points that, you know, should, should then... I mean, we can still refer to the document in the town plan, but I don't, it's not gonna be a cut and paste word for word.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if this isn't finalized, I guess, John, if you... Yeah, I mean, if, if this isn't finalized, I guess, John, if you want to come up with some alternative to no pre-review is required, I, I don't know what to...
I'll, I'll change that, Dan, I think you're absolutely right. I think that's, gives a lot of impression.
Commissioners, any other comments on this before we move on? If others have their hands up, I can't see everyone, so just share that if you do. No, no hands?
No.
Okay. All right, um, great, for our next agenda item, the water and sewer district nexus with zoning. We have a few aspects to that, mapping, and, um, at our last meeting, we talked about changing the land use regs to accommodate the, um, consequences or obligations of the changes in state statute. And then I have a proposal as well related to this. We have a guest, the director of Public Works, Dan Tyler here. Sue, um, so through Public Works came that map, the, of the water system that you guys, um, that was shared with everyone, and, um, staff provided a memo. So, how about staff in the most inclusive term? Whoever wants to go first, let us know what you've come up with, and the recommendations.
I'll start. Um, we had talked about at our last meeting, um, having some mapping done so that we could understand the water in the sewer system. Um, sorry, I'm just trying to get something off my screen. Um, and so, uh, Dan kindly worked with our consulting engineers on the water and sewer system to develop a map. Um, and it's kind of confusing, and I don't think the layperson can necessarily look at it, so, um, I invited it, and Dan graciously accepted to come speak with you all, to kind of talk about the water system in particular. We don't have a map for the sewer system, um, he can speak to that as well, but, um, the constraints, you know, we don't, we don't have the constraints there that we have with the water system. So I sent you all the map, I'll pop that up on the screen, and then, Dan, if you want to, you can come sit closer to a mic, you can come sit with Steve and I, or whatever, um, whatever works best for you.
And does anyone need a review about the reason we're looking at constraints?
No.
Okay, great.
No. Still trying to share. All right. Let's see. It's kind of a big map, and I just think, I don't know how to zoom in, so maybe we'll start. So if you all, if you haven't met Dan, this is Dan Tyler, he is our Public Works Director.
Hello, all. So, this map, this is the water system, and I guess, kind of an overview of the water system is, there's different, different water tanks and pressure zones throughout town, so the primary treatment and tank is up at Pleasant Valley Reservoir, and water flows through the transmission mains, down through town, so the mains are on the map, and they're kind of, they're color-coded by pressure zone. So, on Western Avenue, there's a vault that reduces the pressure. Um, if that wasn't there, the pressure downtown would be too high, so that kind of creates another pressure zone. Um, there's a tank on top of the exit one, at the top of John Sykes Drive. We pump water up to that tank, and that, that feeds that side of town, creates another pressure zone. And then there's a pump up there as well that pumps to Guilford, creating another zone. And the same thing up at Black Mountain Road, up at SIT, there's a tank that kind of creates its own zone on that end of town. In addition to the tanks, there's various developments that have pump stations that feed them, just to kind of increase the pressure and flow in the higher elevations. Um, so those, those are on here as well. Um, so what the, the different colored lines are, is kind of the extent of, the extent of the zone, um, the extent you could extend the water system to and still have adequate pressure at peak demand. Um, so it varies around town, so. The mains are on the map, you know, they kind of indicate where the water system is now, um, but really, there's some overlap with the pressure zones that make it confusing, but they're, they're kind of all, it's, it's, it's more complicated than that, there's a lot of ex, the other factors that are going to, um, kind of determine whether someone could extend those limits or not, but like, just like, pressure and flow as our main factor, those lines kind of indicate the extent of where the system could be.
So, are you saying that, that distance is the primary driver for determining expansion, or is it use?
So...
I, I, how many people do you hook up to?
Right, so we have the capacity of 3 million gallons per day of production and treatment on the other end. Currently, we run, you know, 1.2, 1.5, so, you know, we have plenty of volumetric capacity. These limits are pressure, so it's elevation dependent. The, the, the pressure is determined by the elevation of the tank. So, in the sewer system largely kind of mirrors the water system, there's a few areas where we have sewer that we don't have water. We do have the system mapped, but the constraints are different, there's not, you know, the, it, obviously, it's, it flows best downhill, right? But you could have pump stations to push it up over a hill. We don't really see a lot of constraints in the sewer system. Um, you know, if we were looking at really large flow, large developments, the constraints we'd see would be as we got closer to the plant, um, you know, the, the mains that are there would be at capacity. Uh, but as the mains exist throughout the system, we don't have constraint issues per se.
Through the, um, Dan, through the, um, I mean, Sue's filled you in, probably a better job than I can do briefly right now, but through the changes in state statute, then, um, some parcels now, um, come with consequences to, you know, they're potentially allowed to have greater densities, there's certain, you know, heights of buildings that aren't land use rights, allow the pre-amps, some land use rights. And staff showed us a few areas around the Black Mountain properties, and down there on Old Guilford Road, and then on the way, or from Pleasant Valley, but when I looked at this map, um, I mean, I don't know if I can point to any right now, but I saw a few, like, sections of parcels, like, on either side of, of Route 9 and Western Ave, that are, that overlap some rural residential, and rural parcels, and then, and the thing is I'm going to have to, I have to cough that, I can memorize where anyway.
Yeah, I'm curious where.
Yeah. I guess I'll find one example of these, you know. And then, so I wondered, you know, since this is showing constraints and not actually, like, availability of both water and sewer, and then, I mean, it's informative as far as constraints, but...
We've shown you maps of availability of water and sewer, though at other meetings.
For those specific few parcels, right?
Yeah, I mean, then go back and do that for, for the rest.
Yeah, so, like, right here, this parcel is in the rural residential, but is this showing that water is available there?
Which one?
This one. And then this one as well. This one's even better, because it's, in a sense, because it's right off a road. This one's in the rural district, and this is showing the...
That is a conserved parcel. I think they're both in there.
This is as well.
Yeah, I think they're both conserved, and that's why, um, Dan's pointing to, I'm sorry, um, Tom is pointing to two parcels, um, one that is, let me see, if I can put my cursor on it. Um, one is this big parcel, if you can see my cursor, and the other one is this, which is kind of off of Meadowbrook, and also front Sun Route 9. They are both conserved parcels, so I did not include them.
What about the one just, um, away from the road, of that big one? The one with the houses on it?
The...
The other side of the wet stuff.
Yeah, the other side of the wet stuff, no, going northwest from your pointer? Yep.
Straight up.
Both, both that one where you were, and the one straight up from there.
Do those have sewer?
No.
That's why.
So that's why.
They don't have water or sewer.
Yeah.
They're in the water district, but they don't have sewer.
Okay.
So, I mean, this is really potential, um, you know, it, it's, it's the extent, someone would still have to develop it to get to a lot of these locations, and I think that's going to be your constraint, is cost. Um, you know, it, it, this is just, given our, the elevation of our tanks, where we could, you know, if money wasn't an object, if, you know, land use regulations weren't an object, you could give water to these areas.
One area that does have water and sewer is this, we've talked about it before, this old Guilford Road area. Um, what Dan was explaining to me is that this is serviced by the exit one storage tank. Um, and it really isn't until you hit the red area, the red line, if you're, you can't see the red, my cursor's kind of running over it, that you have adequate pressure during peak.
Below the red.
Below the red. So, even though this whole area above the red is serviced, or, well, not the whole area, sorry.
So, there are several houses that are connected to water and/or sewer up there that pressure is not optimal. If there were a bunch of development elsewhere in town, we'd have problems there. Or elsewhere in that pressure district, I guess.
So then, it, there was the consideration that, you know, since the water and sewer lines at least go through here, I'm just kind of summarizing really briefly, go through here, maybe we should make it, you know, an upzoning to comply with state statute, but now we're seeing the constraints, so there's no, and that's a, a loud way, and reasonable way to not have to upzone to comply with the statute. But then what about, like, those few parcels across from the, from Fayette? You know, that are under the red line?
These.
Yeah. Is, should we still consider it for those, or, I mean, does staff have a recommendation, or is it such a small potential change that it's...
It's not that small a change, though, those are large parcels, I mean, I, I think that to comply with state law, that's showing, this is showing that there is adequate pressure.
Right. Okay, yeah, right.
I would say those, those should definitely, and then, you know, I mean, in the existing system, yes, there is some capacity or pressure constraints in the others. You could also choose to upzone that with that kind of, if they connect to, or if they, if they're connected to water, and then that would trigger them needing to improve that area. I don't know if that's, what kind of improvements can be done there to get better pressure up the hill?
So that's like, kind of like the Winston-Prowdy situation. Um, you know, we have to provide, so this, the pressure is at, so the, the required pressure that we have to provide is at the main. So, like Winston-Prowdy, we have adequate pressure at the main, but by the time you get to the top of the hill, they don't. So, if that development goes forward, they'll have to upgrade their utilities and include a pump station there that will increase the pressure up there. Doable, it's a $4 million estimate to do the water, sewer, and the pump station. So, I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of areas that, that could be phased, that fall outside of this, if someone wanted to. I mean, they probably don't comply with the land use, but if someone wanted to spend the money, you could get it there.
So the developer has to pay that price?
Correct.
Okay, that's a good deal.
And then there's connection fees on top of that, so, like, a three-bedroom house is $1,000 to connect, $1,000 for water, $1,000 for sewer, to connect. And, you know, that's based on a certain amount of gallons per day, and then anything over that is, I don't quote me, $2.35 a gallon for water, and another $2.35 for sewer to connect. So, I mean, if you start talking development, the connection fees get pretty big, too. So, you know, there's not a whole lot of incentive to go to those challenging locations.
Right. So, what, and maybe it's ultimately the planning commission call, but what, Sue, what, what do you recommend as far as, like, below the red line is, any development there will have good capacity, at least of water, what we're seeing here, but then probably sewer too, like I said. Um, but beyond that, and higher up of that, they could have good capacity if they're willing to spend the money with the improvements, and we make the land use regs amenable to them doing that. But we could, we could say that for the whole town, right? So, that, it kind of feels like a gray area of compliance with state statute to me.
Um, it's definitely pushing.
Pushing, yeah.
It's pushing up against it. I would say you couldn't say that about the whole town, because water and sewer doesn't exist throughout the whole town.
Well, I mean, if someone was willing to spend a billion dollars to make up a five-mile line, right? I mean, if we're talking four billion, then might as well, so.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, where, where's the cutoff, that, that, like, what defines a constraint? And, because, because then that will be if, if we consider those, like, three or four parcels on the corner of Mercury and Old Guilford, or if we consider all of them?
Right. I mean, that's for the planning commission to decide. I mean, I think, I think if you talk about far western parts of Rattleboro, yes, you could extend it, but it doesn't currently exist. This exists there.
Right.
And so, that's the decision.
I agree, that was an absurd example.
And you have that bolt, right? It's not one or the other?
It's both, yeah.
Right. Can you just show us quickly the, um, the Black Mountain parcel, or the West River Road parcel, because those are areas, because those are the other two that...
Sure. We'll, we'll start with the Black Mountain parcels. So, I know, this doesn't have an overlay of kind of where the water and sewer are.
But the red line next to the road is, is the water line.
Right. And then this red line that I'm on also defines anything lower than that red line has adequate capacity.
Correct. So, so will, I mean, I guess we're maybe going to be operating on staff, giving us recommendations about this, and maybe stuff, and we'll, we'll weigh in and make the ultimate decision, but what, do you think you will, Sue and Steve, do you think you'll bifurcate that, that property, for example, with a, a, what zoning change? Because the red hashed capacity line goes, bifurcates it?
Um, we generally have it bifurcated in our zoning, we've gone to the parcel line. Um, I think we'll, we could look at that individual parcel, you can see that it's getting steeper...
Right.
Up in this area, so that might get ruled out in general. We could bifurcate if that's what the commission would want.
And these...
I mean, it kind of applies to the whole parcel, like, anyway, I don't, I don't know, it's cleaner to go with the parcel line.
What applies to the whole, applies to the statute, or zoning?
The zoning.
Okay.
I mean, we tried to not split parcels, and so I don't know, we may have gotten rid of, I'd have to go back through the code and see whether or not we have a statement that says if there's, in the past, when we've split lines, there was always a provision where you could go either way, so.
Oh.
I have to check and see what it says.
Yeah, John?
Yeah, I apologize, I'm far from an expert on this, so, um, I may not be asking an intelligent question, but it seems to me, if, if you're saying that the developer has to pay for things like pumps, because there's, you know, no pressure, and, and we're legally, you know, we legally provided the pressure, or we have to provide the pressure, and they have to pay for the pump because there's no pressure out far, then could we zone that for the development that the state allows, and let the developer decide if it's financially appropriate to provide the pump? I mean, they're pretty smart people, they'll say, okay, I'm only going to go so far, because after that, I'm going to have to buy a new pump. And that's really simplistic, I'm sure, but, and that would make it a lot simpler, right? Rather than trying to bifurcate properties and change, and having like half zonings and all the rest. Does that make sense? Did I ask a sensible question?
I, yeah, I think that makes sense. I, I understand what you're saying. I mean, ultimately, it's the cost of extending is going to dictate whether or not you can get the density.
Yeah, and if we don't have to do it, then the developer decides frankly whether or not they want to pay for that.
But however, though, if there are gray areas of how to interpret what's a constraint and what isn't... then... And if there's values that the townspeople have expressed, like let's keep this area rural working lands or forested or something, or just low-density development, then we could help promote that by not just upzoning it to the max extent and letting just finances be the limiting factor.
So I don't know. I don't know, curious, when necessarily say this, but isn't that sort of tilting of rhythms? The state has said that you may have a beautiful forest there, but if they can hook up to a sewer, it can be developed.
That's... And maybe you guys clarified and I missed it, but I...
I hope, I mean, you'd be respectful, actually.
No, no, I get it, but when it says, when the statute says if an area where residential connections and expansions are available minus capacity limits, I just don't know what the definition of a capacity limit is. And I think Sue said that it's up to us to decide. As far as like, within a reasonable range, right? Like, we're hearing, I think, from at least as far as water goes from Dan, that below the red hash mark, there's clear capacity. That's clear. But a little bit up from the red capacity, from the red line, it's like possible with some improvements. So I don't know.
We wouldn't, just so I'm clear, we wouldn't pay for those, because the developer has to pay. So is there some... I'm assuming there's some requirement somewhere that says when you develop a piece of property, you have to provide a certain level of pressure for the homes, right?
Correct.
You can't give inadequate pressure.
The water supply rule dictates what you need to provide, and then our ordinance follows the water supply rule, puts the extension on the developer.
So would it be true then that developers are in a squeeze? Because they have to provide a certain pressure to the home. We've legally done our job with having the pressure wherever we have to have it. And they just have to decide whether or not they're going to do whatever is required to get from... Okay, so I'm understanding.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're... Maybe not in this situation, but we're fortunate not to have the constraints. I think that, you know, there's a lot of other areas in the tank that are in the state that... Like Burlington has areas within Burlington that like this section of town struggles with combined sewer stormwater overflows. So they're really at capacity there, so they can't do anything additional here, but over here, they can. Stowe is going through a lot of that. You know, there's a lot of... South Burlington is exploding, and they're dealing with like different areas of town where they just literally don't have the capacity within their systems to provide anything. So, I mean, constraints in that aspect, we don't have.
Yeah, okay. I get it.
Dan?
Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Tom. And I just want to extend a thank you to Dan and anyone who worked on this map. Put your thoughts into it. I do have one request about it, though. If we could extend it farther west, I believe the purple lines are not completely... And maybe the blue lines are not completely being depicted, just to comment. You know, if you... I think with digital, you know, we can always zoom in and zoom out. So maybe you could even include the whole town on the map, but that's just a minor thing.
We talked about this in the office. So our consulting engineers did this. Are you talking about like Ames Hill? This Ames Hill pump not kind of closing its loop?
Yeah, so, I mean, the Ames Brook Pump Station, that's that zone. That provides water to that development. Realistically, it probably shouldn't be on there the way it's depicted because it's unrealistic that you would ever... That pump station couldn't handle development out that far. I think, you know, it falls within the elevation. You know, they were looking at strictly the total lines and the elevations around, you know, that that pump station supplies pressure up to, but it wouldn't be feasible to go that far west with it.
Well, I appreciate that, but it's good to see the capacity with the topography combined. And I think just for the two reasons I think we started this discussion and requested this was not necessarily to do a needs assessment of some sort, but to really just understand the capacity of the... Where the supply is and what maybe if there were some cost benefit observations that we could make, you know, like where would... So if you were to, for example, with that Ames Hill Pump Station, if you were to improve that pump station, could you get farther, right? And so, for example, right? But the other thing that we, I think, came into the discussion about requesting this map was for the sewer system, where... And maybe you can point out, Dan, if there are any high-risk areas, let's say, of where you really think we should be providing more supply on this map because of septic systems and other situations. And I guess that's maybe another piece you could add to this. If you could give us an idea of sort of how the system grows, how the logistics work, you know, what comes first? What's the order of operations, so to speak, of expanding the system? That could be helpful, but, you know, however you want to take those. For the sake of exploring this map would be great.
Sure. I don't know.
Ames Hill one might be one example where you could do some, you know, comparisons of what you would need pressure-wise, let's say, to reach farther.
I mean, I think the Ames Hill one really, if you look at the Ames Hill development, you can see that the main goes around that circle and through the center of it. You know, that's the same elevation as that blue line below it. But there's no mains there. And really, probably upgrading that pump station, you'd never go across that valley to extend out there. You'd continue out Green Leaf Street and out... Where we Ames Hill there, further. Right now, the water system goes up to Green Meadow, which you can see is not even included in... Within the adequate pressure because at peak demand, which this is depicting, our pressure drops below our required thirty-five PSI there. So, you know, if you were going to extend out that way, you'd add a pump station somewhere in that lower Green Meadow area, probably, to supply a new main that went further. As far as extending it, I've never been here for a main extension. I guess Commonwealth, Algiers was the last big main extension. I mean, that was a whole series of partners and grants.
And grants.
We had like Mallow Road recently, a couple people connected to the sewer system because of failing septics, but that's kind of at capacity. You know, there's not really room for more to connect there. And they took that on themselves for the most part. Signal Hill area, we've been waiting for a water pump station up there for a while. We have the funding for it. We're waiting on the state to sign some documents. And right now, the water system is kind of limited up there, but the sewer system continues out Guilford Street Extension. It goes up Summit Circle, out to Frog Hill off of Guilford Street. The pump station and the initial build won't allow for water service out that far, but it'll give us fire flow kind of to the top of the hill. And there will be room in the pump station for future expansion, which would mean like additional pumps that would allow that main to be extended. You know, I could see that as a place that might make sense for a water main extension at some point. There's quite a bit of development out there already that doesn't have water service.
Would that be down Guilford Street?
Correct, correct.
And Dan, what has been the, maybe different each time? And you said it was before your time here, so maybe you don't even know, or maybe Sue knows better, but what's been the kind of the general decision-making process? You know, is it a developer comes to the town and then consults with the DPW and DPW has a proposal to the select board? Does it say yea or nay? Is that...
I don't know if they start with DPW. I think a lot of times we'd like Commonwealth probably was... They could have been working with BDCC, and then they, you know, there was kind of some larger economic development, you know, nexus. And then I don't know how it actually came to the town.
That one was kind of unique because there was no utility service out there at that point. I mean, it was extended for that project. Most of what we see is pretty small scale within the system. Usually they'll re... Yeah, connections, right? They'll reach out and maybe they have an engineer working on it that'll ask some questions about the system. They'll run some initial numbers and see what it looks like from an engineering end. But they're usually pretty close to the existing system, and it's small. It's residential units.
Yeah, the larger extensions, like I know if you listen to Chris Campini of the Wyndham Regional Commission, he is often talking about, you know, an extension to Burnin... Not Burnin, sorry. Although Burnin might be one of the ones he's talked about. But to Hinsdale, actually, across the river. And wouldn't it be great if George's Fields could be redeveloped with housing? Because that would really benefit downtown Brattleboro. So, you know, there's those... So I think the larger extensions often come from our regional partners, like those conversations, because they need grant funding and they're trying to attract some sort of development. The Exit 1, like the extension to Guilford, I don't know if that came through the state because that was to service the Exit 1.
Right.
Rest area.
Well, the state, the Welcome Center, they made that connection. They brought the service in. And the whole Algiers Village was part of that, that kind of development project. We could really use to see more flow. I mean, we're... The number, you know, we've got a three-million-gallon treatment plant and a three-million-gallon wastewater treatment plant that would run better if we had more flow.
Dan, could you also comment on any areas in general that you might see the need, you know, being highest for some for more water supply? I mean, I understand that there are limitations with development and so forth, but with the existing users that you know of or people who could be users who are outside the system right now?
Yeah, I mean, I think that old Guilford Road area, there's, you know, there's a handful of people that are connected now to the water, a handful that are connected to the sewer. There's been some septic system failures up there that kind of spurred connection to the sewer end of it. As long as people's wells are working, they seem to be pretty content with that. But I could see if people started having water problems, the development's there already, and it would be convenient to be able to hook up. Again, there's pressure issues there. We... So up South Street, Thayer Ridge, that's kind of like the extent of the system. There's a couple houses. I think everyone up there is connected to sewer. There's a couple houses that are connected to water. We've had some people interested, and we don't have supply enough for more connections up there. And again, that would take an additional pump station to boost it. But there haven't, you know, I haven't had conversations with new development, you know, that's interested in any particular area.
So you're... When you say a new pump station, so you're saying it's usually not generally done to just improve or increase the capacity of an existing pump station? You just add another one?
Right. Well, in both of those areas, there's not currently one. So, yeah, it would be new.
Okay.
I think the Guilford Street one's more likely because we might run into compliance issues there. So, you know, it's more likely that that's something we would pursue in the future, which would kind of open up that area and eliminate some of those constraints that exist. Oh, Guilford Road, sorry, not Guilford Street.
Just can you... How much is a pump station?
Million dollars.
A million?
Yeah.
We have a couple other bullet points for this agenda item. If we're okay moving on from this map, commissioners? Then let's do so.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, Sue, I don't know if I missed this or if I'm drawing a blank right now, but for the second bullet point there, proposed changes?
No, we wanted to understand the map a little bit better, so we didn't bring that forward. Was hoping for a little bit of guidance based on this conversation. So, but we can do that for January.
Do you have questions to ask us to provide guidance off the cuff right now?
I don't.
Okay, well. There's no emergency rush, so we'll see you next meeting and see where we go from there. Potentially next meeting. Okay, I'll launch into the proposal, the memo that I provided, that I worked on and is in the supporting packet here. I've mentioned at previous meetings, from my vantage point, it seems like, and I think it's true, not just my perspective, but with the state statute that we've been talking about, it has the effect, as we all know, of preempting some, towns throughout Vermont, but as far as our control, it preempts some of our land use regs. And we've seen the four areas that staff has shown us that are zoned rural residential. And we voted, the majority of us voted last time, to upzone that to residential neighborhood. My concern is that, well, previously, and we also just heard that there have been very few, you know, water and sewer extensions slash expansions. Are those words synonymous, Dan? Extensions, expansions? Okay, they were in this case, okay. There's been very few, you know, there's been some sporadically over the years. But before, when they happened, they didn't come with attached consequences as far as denser development being allowed that just ignores our land use regs and our town plan. It didn't come with those consequences, but now it does. So we have a town plan that presumably the townspeople have weighed in on and said, yeah, we want compact development here, we want industry here, we want waterfront here, we want this area to stay low development and have a rural feel. And then the plan that goes through the planning commission, ultimately, the select board decides those things, but we're kind of the main body in charge of curating that, you know, holding and protecting and guiding, guiding that planning in the town. And the water and sewer extension slash expansion process is a whole separate thing from us. Planning commission has never, to my knowledge, weighed in on that. But now there's a connection between the two where if the town extends water and sewer availability into a low-density area, then now the state statutes attached consequences mean that all of a sudden a dense housing development can be built there. And that may be a conflict with the town plan's, you know, land use map and our land use reg districts. So I wrote that, you know, in detail and maybe more clearly in the memo, but I felt like I should explain it here. And then I came up, you know, with my looking through the ordinance, just trying to make it as simple as possible, a proposal to basically, and maybe there could be better wording than this, but I have a couple options where one would be that extensions of the sewer... And so in the ordinance, there isn't, there's really no talk of the extensions or expansions of the water service area. There's just talk of the sewer service area. And since the state statute says that both of them need to be available, then we don't need to address both of them. We just need to address one. And why not address the one that's addressed in the ordinance already, which is sewers? And then, so basically, and you may want to follow along in the memo unless you've studied it well, but on the second page, option one is to add a section, a provision that extensions of the sewer service area shall be limited to the existing developed and industrial zoning districts as delineated in the current land use and felony rights. So that's one option that I'm proposing. Another option is that instead of that... Another option is that instead of that, any extension of sewer service area shall first receive a letter of support from the Planning Commission in which a determination is stated that the extension and its potential consequences are in alignment with the duly adopted temp plan. Basically, that was my proposal to try to have some party present, which would be us, the Planning Commission or future Planning Commission, to be present in the deciding of any sewer extensions. Because now it comes with, you know, significant land use or development consequences. So I'll take any questions, but then also, you know, we'll pause for that and if there are any, but then definitely want to hear people's feedback and, you know, commissioners. And then we'll go to staff, but if commissioners have questions, direct questions for staff about this proposal too, that's, that's fine.
Doesn't have any questions, it sounded fine to me.
Well, I'm glad to hear it sounds reasonable to you. John, what do you think?
I have a question for, for staff. So when we make a decision to extend a line, sort of broad term, we make the decision based on requests from the individuals perhaps already on the line? Or this general sense that it's a good thing to do? Given that the state has now said that, you know, there is, there is a consequence to extending a line that says that anytime you extend a line, now you've opened that area that the line's extended to development. We, we need more than just a, a recognition by whoever decides to extend a line that you have to think about more than simply the previous issues we had to think about. And now you have to say, listen, if we extend that line, it's, it's going to open up all of this area, some of which may be areas that we really don't want to open up. And so consequently, we don't extend that line as a result. Again, I'm sort of filling my way here because I'm not really knowledgeable in this area, but.
Say your question again.
We decide to extend a line, we think it's a good idea to do. Maybe we have calls coming in from people who are currently in the area where we might extend it to. They want to, you know, they want it beyond city water, for example, or city sewer. We have to now, we have to now add another consequence to our decision making that says, you know, if we extend this line, now everything within so much reach of that extended line, which may include areas that we don't want to actually develop, has now become eligible because of state statute for development.
Yeah, I mean, I would think it is something the decision makers need to be thinking about.
Well, that's right, but that's really, my point is, is I don't, I don't know if it's more complicated than that, if that makes sense.
It's more complicated than that.
And maybe it's the Planning Commission that's responsible for making sure that we're thinking about that. That, that much I don't know, but.
I mean, I think if we don't move forward with any of these proposals or improved versions of these proposals that I made, then I think it's just in the future going to be, like they said, the developers talking to the BDCC, coming to the town and the Select Board and Town Manager, DPW weighing in about possibilities and constraints and what grant money is available. And the Planning Commission won't be involved unless we become privy to it. And then we decide to talk about it at our meeting and just, you know, give a recommendation letter.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I mean, somebody has to be thoughtful about it, so I have obviously no problem with the Planning Commission because that's sort of our responsibility is land use. So I guess I agree.
So I'm trying to make it official and like a required thing. Dan?
Yeah, Tom, can we just address one specific piece of this, which is the cost recovery? I'm not sure I understand.
Yes.
Is, is the developer paying the town to do the extent, the expansion, extension? Or is there a private contractor who is then permitted to do the work by the town or?
So are you bringing that up because in my options, I crossed out the cost recovery?
I, no ulterior motive, I'm just trying to understand.
It's not an ulterior motive, but that's the, that's the part that you're addressing?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, if you look at the, I felt like crossing that out had no effect on cost recovery one way or the other. Because the entirety of section 18 dash 104 is, you know, the title, that intro sentence starting with any and then lowercase a and b provisions. And I feel like all of that section can still just be under a section called Sewers Expansion. And since the provision, the options for the provisions that I'm adding don't have to deal with cost recovery, but they have to deal with sewers expansion. I just put it under that same section. Does that make sense? I mean, they don't, so, so I could have added, let me just add one thing. I could have added a separate section called like section 18 104 B and just called it Sewers Expansion.
I'm just suspicious that there is a reason that we have a, you know, a, a need for this rule for cost recovery. So I, if anyone there knows how that would work, I, I think I outlined the two basic, we're not pay, the developer's not paying the town, is that correct?
No.
Or is that, no? Okay, and so the, the developer is paying a contractor who gets a permit from the town, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so then in, it, I mean, I hear what you're saying as far as the logistics of the focus on the expansion, but it does seem like that's a pretty, it's a, just an important logistical point for a developer who's looking at how they're going to pay for the expansion, you know? But I, you know, so if you want to include it somewhere else or not delete the cost recovery piece?
The cost recovery isn't being deleted. It's, all of that is still there. He just changed the title of the section. It's still absolutely that entire section pertains to recovery. He just changed the title of the section so that the inclusion of his addition would make more sense under a heading.
Fair enough. I, 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 I don't have a, you know, I'm not saying you need to have that, but it, it seems to be an eye catching piece at the top, but, you know, either way.
I mean, potentially instead of the title being Cost Recovery for Sewers Expansion or my proposed just Sewers Expansion, it could be Cost Re-, it could be Extensions and/or Cost Recovery for Sewer Expansions, you know? So it, so it includes everything that's below it. But I think just leaving it Sewers Expansion, unless I'm missing something, it's just a broader title for the section. Umbrella's everything below it.
I personally liked option two best, but I don't know, are we, what is, what are we trying to do this evening? Are we having a vote on one of these options? What was our purpose?
That's what I would like to do, you know, and certainly I want to hear from staff before we do that as well. Just about like, you know, maybe something about this is just not possible or I missed something or there's a better place to put it or. But yeah, what, from my understanding and my, my goal is that we would, at first I thought we would submit this to DPW and they'd send it to the Select Board, but I think we just want to ideally collaborate with DPW if they have input outside of Dan speaking to it maybe at this meeting. But I think we can just make this a recommendation directly to the Select Board. But maybe it'd also be good just to do it as some batched ordinance amendment if DPW has a plan to do so in the next year with some other edits. So, yeah, I mean, I would, I would ask that we, when we get to, I don't think we're there yet, but we maybe get a sense of which option or if there's a better option and then make a motion to approve one option in particular to recommend to the Select Board. So I heard Lindsay, you are leaning towards option two. I'll speak a bit to that. I think I, I heard Sue, if I can speak what I remember of your words a little bit, I think a while back, was, which is that if it's tied to, if a potential sewer expansion slash extension is tied to the existing zoning districts, then it just is a potential, like slowdown or barrier to what might be a good, like reasonable project? I'm not saying, well, because, because then, then, then the, then the document would have to change and we'd have to go through the whole amendment process. If there is a situation that we haven't foreseen where it actually like, oh, it actually does make sense and all parties agree, but yet the document is what it is. I mean, we have to do the amendment process to change it first before we do an extension. I think, you know, if our documents were perfect, then I think we could go with that one. But I think we do often realize that, you know, like, oh, we didn't foresee this and this seems reasonable and aligned to the town plan. So that's too bad that our land use rights are, you know, not perfect. So I think the second option, which gives the Planning Commission opportunity to weigh in and also consider the factors, just, you know, we're kind of the, let's consider ourselves the guardian of the town plan maybe, and then we can use our interpretation of that to, to weigh in on the extension. Just issue a vote up or down with a letter of support, you know, with staff's feedback beforehand. So I, I mean, I'm leaning towards option two as well. My first idea for this proposal was option one, and when I thought more about it, I added option two. Dan?
Well, I'm just curious, you have a question mark at option three and if we, if you had any ideas about that. I, I just, I don't know if, if this is even in the realm of possibility for the discussion, but, you know, I just want to point out this is a public utility where private funder, funding has to go into, you know, making the connection. And it's a pretty significant barrier to development. So I just really want to thoroughly consider if there is an option three, what that might look like. And I'm, I know, I know I'm editorializing, but I think it's a really significant, you know, barrier to development. So that's why I think we should be carefully.
Are you saying that Tom's amendment to that section is a significant barrier to development? Or the ordinance in general as it already exists?
Well, it, both actually, because it is a barrier already. But I, I think, you know, it could be more, so let's just say an option three could explain or lay out what the, what the actual costs are perhaps? Or, or any relevant, you know, information that might influence someone to, to actually make a, you know, to, to actually improve the, the system.
So it just, I guess I'm a little confused because it sounds like you're talking about something beyond what Tom is talking about.
Yeah, I know, I know I am. And that's why I'm just saying if we wanted to discuss what other, you know, we don't have to discuss it, but I'm just curious if, if we want to vote on this tonight, that's fine. Or we could discuss what the, you know, what the other option might be.
The other potential option isn't very clear to me. So I guess, unless, unless you can explain it now or someone else get in a clear way, I guess we could either, you know, defer this if you have a compelling third option that, that you're maybe are going to work on and come to us with to add to the mix or? What do you think, Dan?
Sure, you know, we could, sure. Yeah, we could defer, did you, did you say defer?
Yeah.
Yeah, until next time.
So, so, so you think that, that you have like a, you can develop?
Develop an idea?
No, not necessarily, but, but I can give it some thought.
I suppose we can do that unless another commissioner makes a motion to, to just vote on this. But also I want to hear from staff about their, yeah, their feelings about this.
I'll start. So option one, as Tom kind of explained, I'm not a fan of tying it to the land use regulations. I think that, you know, we do those at a point in time, they can become outdated pretty quickly. It's a little cumbersome to change it. Option two, I'm also not in favor of that. The way it's written is basically saying that you need a letter of support from the Planning Commission. I think that gives too much power to the Planning Commission, the Select Board, the Water and Sewer Commissioners. I don't think that it needs a letter of support. I think it could be analyzed by the Planning Commission if they wanted that. You know, I just think, you know, under the strict reading of that option two, if, if the Planning Commission doesn't support it, then technically it's dead. And there's lots of reasons why you might get a water or sewer extension. Sometimes it's a public health benefit, like happened out in Mountain Home Park or Mountain Home Park. I don't think the town plan back in that time would have had anything in there anticipating an extension. I just don't think that the Planning Commission needs to be inserted in the role. I think the, the Select Board takes those, these extensions very seriously. Yes, to John's point, it's another factor maybe they need to consider if they're going to extend water and sewer lines. I just don't, you know, I don't, I don't think that the Planning Commission needs to be involved in the process. But mostly, most of all, I don't think it should be written in a way that is looking for the letter of support. It could be an analysis based on the town plan and something. It's stripped down, that could be part of the process if you felt really strongly about that. But we can anticipate all the situations where an extension might be needed or where it might be economically beneficial to the town. So that's what I think. Dan, if you've got anything, you don't have to, but.
Yeah, I mean, the, so the, the increased development density is, is in areas where the utility exists, right? So, I mean, it is something that would have to be considered when you, when an extension was proposed, but in most cases, I don't know, it's an old water and sewer system. Like improvements that we have on our capital plan are, you know, improvements to the existing services that don't necessarily include extensions. Does it increase capacity? Maybe, but the development's largely there. You know, I think it's kind of more like replacements. I think it's, it's, the risk is going to come more from potential development that really is just not cost effective. I, I don't know, I guess I just don't see a huge threat there. I think there's enough eyes looking at it from different angles that I, I just don't, I don't see it. I've been sitting on a stakeholder group for municipal water and sewer connections and really the emphasis of that group around this law change is simplifying the process and, you know, eliminating those extra steps that people are seeing as a barrier to development that the developers are just like, oh, we'll go to another town, so we don't have to deal with that. I mean, maybe that, maybe that's what we're looking for, I don't know. And we are, DPW and the town, we're going to begin a utility rate analysis in the near future. We received proposals last week, we'll award that in a couple of weeks. And by spring, you know, we will have studied the utility, the existing rate structure. The consultant, you know, is going to look at alternative rate structures. You know, maybe there's some potential to do something there as well. If nothing else, it'll come with an ordinance change at some point, I imagine.
Yeah, so, so when we look in the context of the Vermont law, the only thing that would trigger the, trigger the law, if you will, is, is an actual extension of the sewer service, right? I mean, upgrade, improvement, all those things don't actually change. I mean, upgrade, improvement, all those things don't actually change.
I believe so, yeah, it's, it's a.
It's only maybe.
More surface area becomes available.
Right, right. And that might then extend the, the.
More parcels.
Into areas that we don't want to extend.
That's my understanding. Commissioner, thoughts after hearing staff's comments?
The little has nothing.
Well?
Well, well, I'll just support what Sue was saying about the, I, I didn't want to get into the specifics of, you know, writing a letter and so forth. But yeah, I, I don't think the planning commission either needs nor might have the ability to, you know, justifiably review these, quite frankly. It's a, you know, there's, there's all kinds of technical details that go into it and it would just, it would be another rubber stamp maybe, but I don't see the need. So that's, that's partly why I was saying we might want to consider an option three. But, you know, that's just my opinion.
So after hearing staff's comments, you're maybe scratching that option three plan?
No, I'm saying we should continue to pursue an option three or, or, or none of them perhaps. I suppose it could be no action, you know, or no, no changes. And I guess, Tom, if, if this, you know, if you need to, if there's a way you want to reframe the memo and so forth based on this, you know, I, that may be a good way to move this.
Yeah, I mean, actually, like, yeah, I mean, I definitely heard Sue's comments. I think, I think if it could, you know, some sort of specification, just phrasing that, you know, the, the tension, you know, the land use consequences are in alignment with the town plan, you know, as interpreted by the planning commission. I think that, that sort of separates out that, that public health extension concern.
Tom, do you think one path might be?
I guess I can potentially foresee how this would actually, all the details of this happening in action.
Do you think one path might be to take the input from staff and the input from the other planning commissioners? And do you think this may be a path to?
Yeah, no, well, that's what I'm hearing, that's what I'm hearing from Dan, and I think you're bringing it up. I mean, unless any, I'll give it some more thought and see if I am, talk with staff more and see if there's something on the road. Unless any other commissioner feels strongly about keeping it right now and having a vote. Sue, do you, off the cuff right now, do you imagine there could be some wording for, you know, the commission giving advisory, you know, like a formal advisory meeting about the proposed extension that the commission makes a recommendation?
Can be, I just don't, I'm sure we can look up other tournaments and find out language.
Right. Do people want me to bring this back another time revised a bit or just vote on it now? Can I hear from someone else? Lindsay, Bonnie, Sarah?
Well, I like the idea of making sure that the town plan is considered. Maybe it's worth thinking more about how that could happen without this particular measure, which sounds like staff is not in favor of. But maybe there are other ways to do that. And I'm not suggesting that I know what those are or that I'm interested in looking into them, just that that's a possibility.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they are either, but I guess, I guess I'll, I'll think about it and chat with staff. And then we'll try to wrap it up with a brief agenda item next one. So that's that then for the water and sewer district and zoning. Thank you for coming, Dan, for your comments.
Thank you, it was very interesting.
Okay, this next one is a, is a new, a new topic. This came to us through the explicit invitation on our, on the planning commission webpage for the public to fill out a form if they have a, an in-depth proposal or initiative.
Is that the first one?
It's the first one that came.
It's the first one, yeah. And so this is the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation off Cotton Mill Hill Road, which has a proposal for their property that has the cotton mill building on it. And since part of the process ideally is that we ask staff and the proposer to, to talk about the, the initiative and hash things out or come together with a combined proposal. I'll just pass it over to staff to introduce this or pass it off to the proposer, whichever they like.
Would you mind if I invited Adam Granholm to speak to? Adam, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to speak to him.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for having me tonight and hearing about this. You know, but to help frame this, the cotton mill complex has been a mixed-use, commercial, light industrial space for, for many years. And it's, for those who are not familiar with it, it's a three-story building plus a separate building. And now with the expansion of, the acquisition of the former Vermont Bread, also includes the Vermont Bread site. One of the things that we found in renting out space to a variety of folks is, it's really on the third floor, people who are doing production are not really eager to be on the third floor. So really the first two floors are the, the most desired spaces and the third floor being the least. We also acquired a property that used to, there was a house on the land across the street from the cotton mill. And that was torn down probably about five years ago now. So that site used to have a house right there. And as we look at our mission for the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, it's really focused on how do we work to ensure that the, the region is a thriving economy and a lot of different levers are involved in that. And probably, you know, no surprise to anyone here, the lack of housing has really been acting as a limiting agent in the economy. And that's housing of all types across the entire region, not just the town of Brattleboro. And our mission is really to work on the levers of the economy so that people and businesses in the communities can thrive. So how do we do that? Historically, we've really applied that lens to only be looking at commercial and industrial support, supporting businesses, small businesses, access to capital. But here we have a resource that is, is underutilized, that could actually produce a bigger mission, if you will, creating more mission, which is the ability to create housing for a workforce-based need in a facility that is in a new market tax credit area. So could bring additional dollars that not, not all parts of the community of Brattleboro have access to. So the capital stack might be easier to put together. So at this point, we're really just in exploratory position here, seeing what could be done, what is feasible. Could we put single standalone housing on the campus? Would that be the best use of the asset that the organization has with our mission really being industrial and commercial? Would it be the, the repurposing of some of the cotton mill, particularly specifically the third floor, to support housing? Could we repurpose the property across the street to put in housing? So we've done some initial feasibility examination of this and enough to come here tonight and talk about this and see if the, if the commission and the community would support changing that zoning to allow for housing. You know, there is housing abutting the property already on several sides. So we, when we initially looked at the zoning, we thought it was permissible. In, in further examination and conversation with Sue and Brian, it was determined that no, in fact, there was no way under current zoning to have housing on, on the site. So we're not yet prepared to be able to say this is something we would do. We don't know if it's completely feasible, but certainly if it's not allowable, it is not feasible.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Sue, yeah, do you want to follow up that with, with us?
Sure. So, yeah, we, we started this with a conversation in the office and I think it was, it was a little eye-opening to us thinking about the parcels and how they're situated and really feeling like the industrial zoning district isn't a good match for it. It's kind of a transition area in the town plan where it's this kind of sits between these residential neighborhoods and some industrial uses. And I think it was imperfect zoning of it when we did the zoning back in 2015. In the memo, I kind of described that area as having three plateaus, the lowest being Route 142, which is kind of the heavy industrial uses. It's the former Georgia Pacific building, it's Triple T, it's Sir Sossen Lumber and it's down into Vernon and that's, you know, the heavy truck traffic, right? Then you have this middle plateau, which is where the cotton mill and these properties sit. And if you extend it a little bit further north, there's Morningside Commons and Morningside Cemetery, which are very residential uses. And the cemetery, which is kind of like sort of space, piece whole. And then the next plateau, which is, I don't know, just a little bit up from the cotton mill, is kind of this mix of uses, but primarily residential. So it's, it's South Main Street and kind of the intersection with Fairgrounds as well is there. So there are some mix of uses there. There's a contractor's yard, the DPW offices are pretty close by. And then historically, there's been bars, little local taverns and, and other small commercial, you know, in that area. Right now, there's a home business with a yoga studio. So it's definitely kind of a node at that intersection. It's not a great industrial. If you read the purpose of our industrial zoning district in particular, we're really, and in the town plan, what we were trying to do is to separate out those heavier industrial uses that really impacted over there with its truck traffic or maybe fumes, things like that. Trying to keep them separate and not allow housing in those areas because in, in other parts of town, we've had, it's impacted residential areas. Cotton mill does not function like that. There's not the heavy eighteen wheeler truck traffic. It doesn't have good access. You're either coming from Fairgrounds or you're coming up Cotton Mill Hill. And if you've ever seen an eighteen wheeler try to make that turn at the base of 142, like, that is just not a desirable location for, for that kind of heavier truck traffic. Currently, like Adam said, it's, it's a mix of uses. There's, there's a lot of artisans. So it's already non-conforming in that way with our industrial uses, which we don't allow kind of the commercial or the artisan uses that you see in the cotton mill hill. So, you know, I think it is, it is ripe for the planning commission to look at that area. And, you know, I think staff does support a rezoning of this parcel at some point. If it happens now, we think that we should be looking at other edge cases in the industrial zoning districts, just so that, because we know of other areas where there's some problems. So like up Putney Road, north of the roundabout, if you are on the east side of the road, there's like Agway and the pizza place, that's also an industrial too. So we think we could look at it, you know, pretty quickly, but look at these edge industrial zoning districts and see are there other areas that could be, should be rezoned.
So is there a, if it was to be rezoned, is there a zoning that exists today that both addresses where Adam wants to go and where he has it there already? Or would we have to bring it up? Or we have to create a new slash custom zone?
Staff are thinking mixed use in that area and extending it out to kind of that intersection, that node that would allow housing and, and the uses that are currently there, like industrial, commercial, that would allow that. If we were looking up in the Putney Road area, maybe we just switch it from industrial to service center in some of those parcels, which also allows.
And then one other question. Is there a long-term consequence to taking this land out of industrial zoning, which I presume has some tax base that would be different than the tax base we would need it to?
Ooh, that's not a question for a planner. We leave those questions to the assessors. I don't know if Adam knows the answer.
They don't have different tax rates though, if that's what they're asking.
Well, maybe, maybe tax base is too specific, but there certainly has to be long-term consequences with, I assume, reducing the amount of industrially, industrial zone area we have.
Less potential employment.
Less, less potential employment, fewer opportunities for large industrial, large companies slash industrial companies coming in. I mean, that may be a realistic expectation given Brattleboro, but I'm just wondering if that's something that should be looked at as well. Really more than a yes or no, is should we look at that also and say, you know, do we still have enough industrial zoning, industrial zone area for what we want Brattleboro to be in terms of jobs and content and all the rest?
I suppose if, if we were to consider moving forward with considering that's one of staff's proposals is to identify transitional areas of industrial zones, then that could be part of our consideration. So Sue, do you want to keep taking questions now or do you, are you finished with them?
No, no, you can go ahead and take questions.
Okay. Because, yeah, you do have three potential proposals here and the spot zoning and stuff, but presumably we all read it too. Bonnie?
Yeah, I would, I would like to know more about what Mr. Greenwald, I'm sorry, I can't see your name on my computer, but what you have in mind for, for development? Because I think that developing that into residential would be very challenging on the roads because that's, that's a very challenging road to have to go down that, that road and then make that, that turn onto 142. I mean, it's hard enough, I know it's really challenging for big trucks, but it's also almost impossible if you're a car. And now with, with more traffic coming up and down Vernon Road there, I, I would not support that in being the main road to be used by development, residential development. And, and it's also really strange land. It's very hilly and kind of crazy. So I would really like to see what you had in mind before I, I would even consider making that residential or rezoning it.
Sure, yeah, happy to, happy to try to address that question. I think primarily at this point, we're, we're exploring the repurposing of a portion of the building that exists, so it would not be new construction. As you say, you know, there is, there is area, there is land, flat and easily developed. The question for us and our mission is, is how do we best utilize the resources that the organization has for our mission? And the mission is, is really what, what drives us. And traditionally, that answer would have been only commercial or industrial use, as is already the case. However, given the importance and the, just the overwhelming need of housing in the region, work, in particular workforce housing, it is causing us to look at, could we actually get more mission by utilizing a portion, an underutilized portion of the building to bring housing to the community in the region? So we don't know the answer to this. We are really in the early stages of exploring this, but a hard stop is if it's not allowable. So to speak to the traffic. So, to speak to the traffic, I don't believe it would necessarily increase traffic that much, you know, the, the number of spaces that are there currently still have tenants and employees, albeit less dense than perhaps we would like to see in that, that upper floor. So I don't know that it would necessarily create a lot of new traffic, just different traffic.
I just wanted to jump in here and, and remind the planning commission, I mean, we're not, in my mind, we're looking at, is this, do, do we want to consider looking at industrial areas for some residential? We're not talking about specific plans for this particular process, because I think, for this particular project. And I think transportation, you know, the, the system, the road system is something to consider, you know, if we're going to make some recommendations on industrial zone, that maybe we'll, we'll move towards a mix of uses.
Sue, just for you commissioners, I think what the first part you were saying, to help me clarify a little bit, is that when we do planning, right, with districts, we're supposed to be thinking not like, oh, hey, what's your proposal, and what sort of amenities are you going to have, how can we make that possible, but like parcel by parcel, or like neighborhood by neighborhood, and what the borders are, like, what's, what's the feel, what's the vibe, what's the possibility, what's the, what's the, what will, what's needed in that area, what can that area provide in relation to others? It's more...
It's more the, the...
Whatever that's called, mile-high view?
Yeah, the mile-high view, and such.
So, Sue, so your, your desired outcome is a decision as to whether or not we want to consider this as a spot zone, or whether we want to take a bigger perspective? I was a little confused by your statement.
No, I, what I don't want to do is get into specifics of, you know, I mean, I know the request came through thinking Cotton Mill Hill, they're thinking about housing. I want to pull it out of spot zoning, so I don't want to talk about specifics of this particular project.
So, so really, the question you're asking is, is should you be, should the planning commission give you a charter to go look at the industrial areas and look at whether or not they should be rezoned?
Yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the staff look at the industrial zoning, which won't come as a surprise to Sue, because I was annoyed last year that none of the businesses in those types of zones were interested in housing people. So I would like to encourage us to do whatever we can to try and get them involved in housing people. When I looked at the proposal, I liked the idea of it being a conditional use, you know, you had showed the table, and I thought, oh, conditional use, that makes sense, the little footnotes, I understood that, that made sense to me as ways that we could kind of curtail or limit. Perhaps, I, you know, I assume that in our downtown, we only allow housing on upper floors, so the same sort of idea in the industrial zone, like, it probably would not be appropriate to have first-floor housing in the industrial zone. But generally speaking, I, I think that the, the staff should look at this. I think this is really important, and that we need to move on this quickly.
Okay, so I'm, I'm happy to move, the planning commission asked staff to look at rezoning industrial, I think that's the question I should be supported. I mean, I realize there's more discussion on it, but if you want to put a motion on the table, I'm moved.
Is there a second?
I did not hear what was said.
Yeah, we couldn't hear what was being said.
Sorry. So, following on with what Lindsay said, I'm willing, I realize there may be more discussion on this, but I'm willing to put a motion on the table that planning commission asked staff to look at appropriate rezoning of industrial areas in Brattleboro. If that's the way you want to phrase it, I mean, I agree with what you said.
That was Lindsay's second.
Oh, you second, okay.
Yep.
All right, yeah, and I realize we're getting close to 8:00 PM, and that was maybe partially what motivated the end of motion going, and I'm not saying it's not a good one, I'm not saying that, but we should have a discussion before we vote.
Could, could you please repeat the motion? I didn't understand hearing it.
Go ahead. I'm not, I'm obviously not working well.
Yes, please.
Okay. So John moved to ask staff to look at appropriate rezoning of industrial zoning district, of the industrial zoning district.
Thank you.
I would just say, before we vote, in their, in their memo, staff's memo, I mean, they did propose, well, Sue, you, you spoke to us about seemingly preferring one of those three options more so than the other, but then I heard a commissioner saying that they let the footnote version, but your, what you were saying was the transitional areas, but what you proposed to convention another time was mixed use. I know you mentioned that, too, so are we sort of, is this motion just to proceed in all three directions, or just for staff to pick whatever they recommend of those three or another the most?
I'd just like to see staff develop more, more in-depth recommendations, look at it further, and come back to us with what you think is really the best way to move forward. I mean, we've seen that there are multiple possibilities, but I think it's a nuanced subject, and so you have the broadest view of it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that for me. Any other discussion before we vote? No? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand up. Who's voted present here? Lindsay, Sarah, and Bonnie, it's all of us.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Granold, for...
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, thank you for what you do, appreciate it.
There'll be more to come. Okay, any public comments before we wrap up? I don't think anyone's here who would do that. So, that's over, and we completed our business, so we're adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. I'll be sending out the 2026 meeting schedule, but I hope you all enjoy your holidays.